Okay. Does anyone have any amendment to the agenda? Okay. How about the floor on anything that's on the agenda? All right. Dennis, do you want to go through these for the public? The first three items are going to be dealing with Heritage Estates. And this is culmination of many weeks of wordsmithing and thinking and whatnot, so...
Before I do, I think Mr. Walker has a document that he wants to submit to you just informationally speaking.
Okay.
Yes, I saw Jerry's article online this morning. And I guess there was some question as to ownership of the project. So I just put together a summary, so you know what I'm going to do.
Good.
That probably would be helpful. Heritage Estates is just the name of the development, so...
It really is New York Farms LLC.
Correct, correct. And the New Jersey address is Rogers address.
Right.
The 14 Catherine Court address is my address.
Right. Yeah, I figured this out during the week or Monday. But thank you for this.
And I thought it was probably straightforward, but just in case there was any...
Sure.
And then, just to give you an overview of what you're going to do, although which the details are in front of you. You could use have complete copies. There's three resolutions. The first resolution you'll be acting on will be approval of the format, acceptance if you will of the developer's agreement, and authorizations of the supervisor to sign them.
Right.
In connection with that, there's also a document entitled in regards to right-of-way abandonment by New York Farms LLC, which involves a vital path issue. So that we can take it into park lane eventually and avoid that ever becoming approved later.
Now, is that going to be a second?
No, it'd be part of the one part of the first one.
Okay.
The second motion will then, again, those documents will be signed, I assume, by Mr. Walker this evening before you approve those resolutions. Unless they are executed, if you will.
Okay.
You're not really in the status to approve them. The second set of documents, which is the rest of that package, refers to the fact that you are going to accept, I'm sorry, approve the format of all those documents submitted by Heritage Estates, which includes the open space parcel A, the irrevocable offer of dedication, five bargaining sale deeds, three permanent easements, and authorizing you, Doug, if you will, as supervisor, to sign those documents on behalf of the town, which documents are all going to be held in escrow until such time as we're ready by formal resolution except A. A simple example is a road. We don't take them over until they're finished and they're engineerially signed off on, if you will. So, but we're going to front-end the documents so that we don't have to chase them later on. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. It'll be easier on the town and also be much cheaper for the applicant because they won't be recurring...
Question. Can anything, could anything take place between now and whenever? Because some of this stuff is still in front of the planning board that might alter any of those agreements?
Um, not that I can foresee, but if they did, they'd have to come back again, I know it's great.
No, that's what I'm saying. The monedies is going to be happening as the documents go along.
Yeah, yeah, but pretty much, they are, I can't speak for the applicant, but they're substantially complete. We think we've got probably a few issues yet. You couldn't get the map signed tomorrow morning.
No, no, we have to. The main issue is we've got to go back to the Orange County Health Department with the new water connection and that.
And then, the third resolution is the actual resolution approving the extension of the districts pursuant to town law. So if you follow, logically speaking, Mr. Walker, as the principal managing partner of the LLC, would sign off on the developer's agreement, the abandonment. We approve those. You're authorized to sign them. The others, as he knows, have been submitted by their professionals and reviewed, modified, corrected, if you will, or accepted by us. And they'll just be held. All you're doing is approving the format.
Right.
And they're held by obstacle such times. It's timely, if you will, to accept those by formal resolution. And the last item, once those things are all done, then by definition, you're ready to expand the district. I don't think you'd want to expand the district without those things being included.
Do we have the, I still have not seen the resolution from the village.
No.
Uh, yes, I have it. I don't have it as we speak.
Okay.
Yeah, but it exists.
It exists, and it's just as we...
Correct, just as we had concerned, if you will. For all those months, we had no expression from that one. In fact, yeah, if necessary, I could probably get the village attorney on the phone if we have any questions. Only because I don't have it with me.
As long as you saw it and you're satisfied, we're good to go.
Correct, yes.
I'm still a little confused. Maybe you could help me out.
Yeah.
So I haven't seen this directly. I do see is the New York Farms, is Heritage only subsidiary of New York Farms? Is that a separate Heritage Estates?
Heritage Estates is just the name of the project. That's not an entity. It's just what we called the project. Heritage Estates is the name.
Well, that's okay, but how about Heritage Edgoshin LLC?
Heritage Edgoshin is a separate LLC. Has no interest in the land at all. That was just a company that I have that brought us getting approvals for the company, which was started before we owned it. So it has no interest in the land itself. Only New York Farms LLC has interest in the land.
When they file it at the county clerk's, they're going to file it under the Heritage Edgoshin and not LLC?
It would be filed under New York Farms LLC.
Okay.
And the name of the project, I mean, it's just the name.
I understand. I totally understand.
You totally what?
No, I understand.
Okay.
So it's a similar format or procedure, but it's a different section of the town law. And so what this resolution recites is that pursuant to that, we had public hearing, well, again, the preamble is whereas, that we've, back in '59, the original districts were created. We're presently considering expansion. Whereas back in 2007, we're filing the town board engineering reports. Remember, that was Peter Zachsenfau's report setting forth the effect, physical and otherwise, of the expansion or the creation or expansion of the district, which was, again, embellished later. It's been supplemented. The maximum amount to be expended by the town to affect this is zero because the applicant's paying all the costs.
Right.
We had a public hearing on May 18. There's a typo.
It's 2011.
2011. And we also, pursuant to an order or resolution we adopted on February 11 of 2011. And then, we also reaffirm all of the reports, activities, and actions of the planning board, which as you remember, acted as the lead agency for secret purposes, both with regards to the subdivision application, which, part of which was sewer water. All right, so we're reaffirming that. And then, the motion to approve, if you will, is set forth and it basically recites those delineated items. That one was called for a public hearing, which was published and posted. That's the previous one we talked about, back in 2011. All the property owners are benefited thereby, are finding. Three, all the properties are benefited by the extension, including the properties and residents, if you will, future coming within the limits of the extensions. Four, the extension of the district is proposed in the public interest by, this is subject to a permissive referendum. That's by state law. I can give you details on that if you're interested. But this is effective 30 days from adoption of the resolution. All right?
Okay.
If 100 or 5% of the landowners in the affected expanded area object, they can file a petition and you can, you have a vote.
Okay.
Okay?
Right.
Which, if you follow, there are no affected, disaffected, or otherwise members in the district expanded other than, guess who? Okay?
You know, I got, to me, a year or two ago, John McCary wrote all the town supervisors a letter. Something about, and I had it really vague in my mind, that all of this had to be approved by the county real property tax office.
Yeah, but that's notification on referrals to their planning. Not so much the tax office. They're going to want to make sure taxes are paid on any transfers, etc.
Okay.
You could probably speak into that.
I don't know what, I mean, again, I'm really digging down deep. There was something from McCary, though, that the county had their finger in.
What he's probably getting at is this. Any subdivision, okay, can't be filed unless all the taxes on the property are paid current.
Okay, well, that makes sense.
Yeah, believe me, that's what it is.
Okay.
And so, that's probably what he's referring to because it obviously involves the subdivision, which eventually is going to be signed off and approved by the planning board.
Okay.
I'm sure as you fellas know, you can't record it or file it with the county clerk's office unless there's evidence of or the records reflect it's current.
This had something to do with creation of a water or sewer district. Required their rubber stamp, their approval. And this is really with an expansion. Is that creating a new water and sewer district?
No, no, not.
Okay.
They may be worried about affected properties and taxation, but once again, my earlier comment against the applicant. There's nobody there.
Very good. All right, well, that's good.
And then it goes on to recite, again, the permissive referendum is subject to. If none is petitioned for within 30 days, it's final. And we have to, again, I'll work this out with the clerk's office. We have to post, we have to publish, and we have to also record it with the county clerk's office. There is no reference to the state comptroller's office or the state level because there's no monies expended by the taxpayers.
Right. Okay, does anyone like to make a motion regarding this resolution?
So we'll...
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Yeah, go for it, George.
Okay, now, well, first of all, there's a typo on the second page. The second line says, "Yes, chances have no cost to the town or..."
Yep, instead of the district, "or", yep, not a problem.
Now, the second thing that was confusing to me and I'm referencing, I guess, what Rick Social has here maybe been. But when you look at the needs and bounds, it looks as if a part of the sewer district is taken out, 6.22 acres.
Yeah, it is.
I was under the impression that the water and sewer district were exactly the same.
It is, Steve, in other words, just to recite what it's supposed to be. I think I see what the error is already. This description, as originally prepared, if you remember, was prepared for the creation of a new district, all right? If you look at the heading on it on the first page, it refers to legal description for the sewer district.
And that was my other question to you.
There should be sewer and water.
Water slash sewer.
Correct. And the reference in that paragraph to said sewer should be said sewer and water district. Because they are co-terminals. Yeah, they're identical. And the only thing that's excluded is that portion. I think it's of the culprity on which there are homes, private residences. Four are already there, I think you have two in the lot.
Correct. That's more than 6.22 acres.
Oh, yeah.
A lot more than that, right?
Yes.
Right. So, and then when I looked at the maps, the maps looked exactly the same. I guess these were incorrect. More sewer districts.
Yes, they should be exactly the same. Yeah.
So I think possibly that needs and bounds in this particular one are wrong.
Is that on the description of the district, George?
Yeah, that's it.
Yes.
Yeah. In fact, let me just show it to you, Steve, and maybe you can decipher that aspect. Yeah, it's typos otherwise in those captions. Let me just put those in here. See, this is the description. You guys kind of went through my office for the entire district. And, you know, a lot of the plot, it's 154 acres. But look in the stack. You can see it's 154 acres. And then it excludes, so yeah, it could be, it could possibly be 60 acres. But again, it'd be hard.
Maybe it could be 154 acres.
So I can't tell you whether that's accurate or not. This was what George was pointing out. He thinks that that's probably more than 6 acres.
No, I mean, that's referring to the culprity.
There's this, I don't know if you guys got this map, which is... Yeah, we've got it. So the district is 154.
Right.
The balance is, you know, maybe around 100, a little less than 100.
Right.
The 6.4 is, there's a lot, this lot right here.
Oh, yeah, where it's excluded.
That's where the homesteads are because it's not included in the...
In the 100.
The Haril.
Oh, that's the culpry.
Yeah, that's where there's like the four houses.
There's three or four houses on the lot right there. So the district area is about 154 acres.
Correct.
148, okay.
So then, would you think that the 154 is correct?
Yeah, I think the 154 is correct.
So then, really, the old, yeah. Then the second page is correct as stated, except for the fact that on the other page, it has to be water slash sewer.
Yeah, and I think in fairness, the second page after the 154 recitation said sewer and water districts. Because they both exclude that same lot.
Right.
All?
But the rest are included in the district? The rest of the gray areas included in the district?
No.
That's what I, if the lots excluded...
These gray areas, like, is this all in the district?
That's out.
No, that's the...
It's 154 total, 254 total.
Right.
What's it kind of ordered?
Yeah, 154 is the white area plus the excluded gray area lot. The other gray area lots are nothing to do with this transaction or a project. They have additional land.
And part of the project is outside of the district. The district is the 75 lots.
Yeah, these are the six single lot. Well, there's only two. There's two, there's the, there's, what we, just density-wise, there's four existing houses of the culpry.
Right.
Then there's two proposed estate lots.
Right.
And one of those is really the big lot that has all, that's the aggie's mid, and really the farms.
But they're not going to be in the warrants here.
None of that, all of that is in the gray area.
Right.
And when this is...
That's the open space area.
This is the open space area A, and then the cluster and then open space area B.
Well, my question was going to be, if the whole gray area is excluded, why are they also referring to that six acres? If that's part of the exclusion, why are they treating that differently than the rest of the exclusion? I mean, it's like, this is out and this is out. This is part of, this is out too. What does that mean? I don't understand.
I don't know. Maybe it may have been in your legal description.
I don't know. I'm going to take this before I write, right? What was that? It's not part of the, you don't have to transfer it.
Right, but that's a good point. It's included right here.
Yeah.
We'll take a look at it. I mean, it's...
Yeah, to my knowledge, it was just the way the surveyors did the description. The surveyors did the description.
I understand.
Yeah, I agree with you, Phil.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand.
So then, should we hold up on passing this tonight until we find out exactly what they mean? What a sewer district is?
Well, we can tell you what the water sewer district is.
It's the 154. That's the 154. All the white. All the rest is excluded.
Everything else, you can actually probably trace.
Well, that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
So the line through, we need it out.
Well, before you do that, you better find out why that was. Someone went to great pains of...
Yeah, I didn't do it. I can't respond.
Well, because part of, because the way the existing lots are now, the, we'll call it culpry and the active piece, or the culpry and the, oh, let me use the correct terms, please. Culpry and the New York Farms piece. When it's all said and done, those property lines get shifted around. So this, basically, the white part is the end product of either, of the subdivision.
Right.
So you're going to have, so this...
All the rest should be excluded.
Well, it's still, we described, we described the total holding. And then the excluded is a portion, because it's not, the maps aren't filed. It's the lots are created. So they're saying of the 100, 254 acres, which is the total of the New York Farms LLC and the culpry state, about 100 of that is getting excluded, is excluded from the district.
Right, but the way they have it is 96 are going to be excluded and six are going to be excluded. Right, that's always my question. What's the difference?
Well, the six is the distance, I know that.
Yeah, no, no, I didn't think it. If they're all excluded, they're excluded. We don't care. You know, so, okay. I just want to make sure there's nothing in there. We don't understand.
Okay, yeah.
So what do you got, Dennis?
This will clear it up.
Oh, okay.
Now, formerly of New York Farms, that's why.
Right, okay, yeah.
We got it.
Yeah, I think, in fact, look at the, you see, this, what's happened is somebody controllessly put this note on this map. The area has to be excluded from the sewer district.
Yeah.
That's not the parcel. The parcel is the, is the square, more or less. See, what it is, you're going to err on this map. And the map is not part of the filing. It's just descriptive purposes for yourself. What you have here is, you see where the note reflects this as being accepted out? Which is causing the confusion here?
Right.
That note should not appear there. That note should refer to this parcel right here. You see that? The square one.
Okay.
Which is part of the white area, which if you follow, the lines have been moved, etc. What happens on these things, and again, this is just for example purposes, there's been so many changes and revisions over the years that I'm sure you appreciate. You use a basic template and then you go forward. And sometimes, these things start to...
It's the attorney for the town. Can we proceed on with this?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. Because you know, it's funny...
And this will all be corrected?
Yeah, and this map will actually be excerpted. This won't even be filed.
Well, that's what I'm...
So the map actually is correct because as Mr. Cantorino said, that hatched area, that note refers to the entire hatched area.
Correct.
The out of the parcel that Tom about, that was that...
Is the square.
Square.
Which is currently owned by New York Farms, but will be taken out of that.
Correct. So we pull that, follow?
That's going to the culpry, is it?
Well, it's going to the, it's going to the lot for the ag lot. But that's when the map gets, that lot doesn't exist now. That's why it's excluded from, but when the map is filed like it's, will be created.
And just so far, we're comfortable. This was proved, the description, against the boundary, and that is correct.
Okay.
Meaning it's just that...
So there are three corrections on this resolution then. The "or" second, the second set.
Yeah.
And then the February and May, those are 2011.
2011, yeah.
And that's it?
And then...
And water sewer.
Water, right, sewer and water district. Sewer and water district, both in the title and the description.
Yeah.
They will be correct because that is filed. The maps are not reported.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? All right. Madam President, we have a roll call, bud, please.
Councilman Cantorino?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye. Motion carries.
And what I'm going to do, I'm just going to, well, in terms of filing, it's going to be required each of you to sign. But if you notice, because we're going to modify it, I can have you sign this now, knowing the modifications appear on the first page.
We'll be here to sign it, unless one of the...
Yeah, you do it at a later time.
I trust.
I just, I got to get it within 10 days, though. I have to record it.
So we're going to do this tomorrow, is what you're saying?
We'll do it tonight. Well, we're all in here.
We'll crank the offices up, no.
We'll finish the meeting and then do that.
Right now, we just don't give it until you've got it. It's right here. We just don't give it to them.
Yeah, that's also possible. Yeah. What? Yeah.
Right.
Just another way, just so that I feel a little bit more comfortable, whatever the needs and bounds is, we'll call it 154 acres.
Right.
But another way of saying this, in this water and sewer district, the maximum amount of hookups that could take place is 75.
That was going to be one of the questions.
Correct.
Those other lots are big enough to have their own.
But they're not included? Well, they are, they're individually well-instructed.
Yeah, they're not even in it, that's what I meant.
No matter what happens, because, you know, I didn't have this problem, but there was a problem with the original town building park, where there were lots and then there were additional lots.
Oh, see, right, yeah.
That whole, I just wanted to make sure, 75 is the...
That's what the village is bringing to. Now, if they want to, later on, if there's something that we're all with village board and town board, we'll have to deal with that.
Yeah, if it was going to be more, we would...
If you really look at even more extensive is the condition that could be final approval of the subdivision. And I can assure you that there are just not suspenders, but there's belts, there's ribbons, and everything else to prevent any further development of the parcel.
It can't happen. It truly can't happen.
No, but I was, that was going to be one of my questions, George, but when they encompass the white part and that is the subdivision part, and that's all that was approved on our map, that's all they can do. So I felt most...
Again, just as I said, how many conditions did you have on your final approval?
The final one was 48.
Okay. I mean, there was conditions placed on the approval by the planning board. Meaning this has been extensively reviewed.
Oh, okay. Are we done with resolutions for New York Farms now? Or we start to...
No, we're done.
We're done, okay.
I would like to have that resolution signed, though, so I don't have to come back and change it.
Bring it on.
I just had a general, a general question to discuss.
You're going to have different originals, aren't you? And you won't have original signatures on your new originals.
No, I'm going to have one original. There's only one.
Which will be changed.
No. Because, yeah, if you follow, if you're gonna see here, the page where the changes occur are not on the signature page.
Oh, so you're gonna get a blank signature page.
And I'm gonna add in your...
Anything you want. I got it. Bring it on. No, we'll sign it first.
So I don't wanna see this on tape or be here as recorded, but you hear all your life, don't sign anything to your attorney's signature. Take it to your attorney, like I try, sign it with blank, I'll take care of it. Uh, correct. And see, though, in all fairness, I did not draft this. This is not my resolution, so, you know, I apologize for any misspellings. It wasn't mine.
You disclaimer everything.
Hey, you have to.
It's like, trust me, I'm from the factory.
I know. My parents in the business, so I use them to make a copy.
Trust me, I'm from the factory. All the people that understand.
Yes, you do. I was gonna, rather disrupt the meeting, I was gonna get you to sign those separately.
I still have a good question, because you guys were not here on Monday, and we discussed this a great length, but it's still gonna trouble some today. And that is specifically, it gets on most trouble about parcel A, 72 acres. You guys being the grantor, me being the main fee for your conservation unit. There's gonna come a time where New York Farms leaves, they're gone. So the grantor becomes...
The HOA.
Okay, so in the process that you come through, there is gonna be an HOA that's created.
Yeah, let me just, because if you remember, a couple of years ago, we were before this board for a petition for a formation of drainage district.
Right.
And the board decided not to look forward with that. So our alternative to that was, we had to form a homeless association.
Okay.
Because they're gonna own, and, George, most, I think all of the drainage basins are actually in open space tags. They're not included in the open space calculations, but they physically are in that lot. And then what we've, one of the things to improve tonight is impeachment over those facilities, and the town has the right, not the obligation.
Right.
So they're gonna own that, and they're also gonna own the drainage facilities and the responsible maintaining of them. And then there's a little Central Green, a little place, you know, Green Place.
So the taxes, the homeowners association is responsible for the taxes? Okay. What I'd like to do is jump down to new business.
I just got one call.
Where?
Since we're... Since we're on, I just wanna say, good luck. Right, it is done, it's in your hands, so...
And by the way, what is your schedule? I mean, I know you're...
Well, we're gonna do it as quickly as we can now. We've gotta get our plans back over to the Health Department.
Yeah.
And if you don't find it, use your services to make a few calls to some people and maybe help push that through.
Okay. Now, with all that being said, and the punch list you got for the final, when do you think you'll start working on this project?
Our goal is to try and start in the fall again. We have the Indiana back issue there, so we can't finish our three quarters until after September 30th?
September 30th.
October 1st. So we're looking to start getting back in there and starting that, worst case, it would be in the spring.
Okay.
Very good.
Good. Well, good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much. So Kevin, we're gonna jump down to you on the, your central capital projects list that you've got here.
I just handed them a copy of what Chris or, I guess, Chris emailed me. So we all have a copy of this, Kevin.
Yeah, we have.
In fact, if you don't have it, if you haven't, if you don't have it with you, I got another copy.
No, I've got it with me, I just got some notes on it.
Okay.
Right, these are capital projects at the Ford Parks?
Right.
That are either in progress, or they're undefined at how we're gonna accomplish that. Over Craigville Park, the town park, well, let me start off with Craigville. The first thing we have to do is, we gotta change the sign.
Oh, sure.
That's good to be aware of. We have a new name for the park. So we're gonna, you know, try to get some signage, and we'll have to get you guys to approve of some sort of symbol that will carry going forward, you know? Okay? And then, by the way, the signages are gonna be, probably, we're looking at a budget of a couple of thousand dollars to get them done properly, okay? Right, the big thing in Craigville right now is drainage in the left field of the majors field, that's the first field you come in and have delight for the 12-year-olds, you know, the kids that are just getting there, you know, 10 and 12-year-olds. We have a problem in left field that really started to come into play when they finished the cemetery or the veterans' park. And all of a sudden, left field is mired in a lot more groundwater. And it's not coming off the road, we believe it's coming underneath, you're on a shale bed, draining down off that hillside into the swamp. We have an idea how to fix, the reason I fix that, because, you know, back then, when Honey Berthley was the supervisor with Grant, and they dug out there and put in perforated pipe to drain all the center of the park to the stream. And that's, it's from this, that pipe, that 16-inch barrel runs from the second entrance, straight across the middle of the park, the back of this girl's softball field, and between the majors field, and comes out by the garage where we store the equipment. But they, what they did, though, remember Kevin, when they, when Mark Warren was, Senior was here, they went out and dug ditches in the field itself, and put in gravel and perforated pipe wherever, so the groundwater would come up, it would siphon off and go to that... Or go to the main barrel, yeah. Yeah, it was back 2003, '04, somewhere around there. Yeah, Betsy... Dunleavy. Dunleavy was spearheading that, and she got the bonding and... Right. And so, can we tie to that, is the question? Right. First of all, I wanna compliment you. Broderick Noel has been a blessing. Good, sure. I mean, he's a team player, should be on board, and we're working on him. So we're com, there has been, he has looked at it, and Broderick is, is, is gonna attempt to handle this with us in July. When he gets, when he gets free, we're busy right now. He's got an idea. It may not be tied into that main ground, we might hit the ditch where the cattails are. Okay? But we'll bet up to Broderick and his engineer. Okay, very good. So that's your, what are your top priorities? I mean, looking at all these, are these in a priority sequence? Yes, yes. Yes. The drainage and resurfacing on Castle Field, that's the back field.
Is that the, I call it the pony league field, the senior field?
Yeah, that's the senior field, yes. Okay, we're having, again, on the mountainside, leaning into the hill, which you get in left field. You know, we've attempted a few things over the years, it's just not getting there.
We don't own that property, if the hill comes down.
Right, we don't, we did, by the parking lot, so we did put a, I mean, we did put, yeah, we did put a drainage pit up there. You know, the object is that the drain, if you're up this high, and you put a ditch down three feet, but the field's down eight feet...
As long as it's down one foot, it's gonna get it.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I go out there and look at it all the time.
We knew that problem, that problem would exist when we built that. It was not palatable, but they needed the field, so we just went ahead and built it. And we said, I remember my, when I stood out there, it was like, oh my God, with the engineer. We knew it was gonna be a problem. Okay. So... So that's an undefined scope right now? Yeah. Okay? But, so we're, I'm bringing up things here for 2013, really, right? And we're bringing to you now, just so you know what's going on. We'll talk to, again, Broderick will have some input here, you know, and maybe a town engineer. Drainage on the soccer fields, when you come in the second entrance, obviously, we have our two main soccer fields. We're in phase one of this project now, which has been, Soccer has come up with $10,000, and our, you know, the Ocean Parks and Recreation has come up with $10,000, and we're doing phase one, which is looping two foot off the outside barriers, the lines of the field, with drainage pipe. That, we had Sal Fini's Construction Company was the low bidder. We didn't go for the full drainage system yet, because we're gonna have to raise these fields up again, and put a new top coat on them eventually, because we're getting, you know, the settlement because of the amount of water. And so we're doing just the perimeter drains now. And those perimeter drains, we'll do both fields, and it's, if I'm not mistaken, it was close to 600 feet of perimeter pipe for each one. Okay, so we'll loop the whole thing, we'll get them to the drainage. And that's phase one, and that's being accomplished as we speak right now, okay? We got the insurance certificate from the other day, and Sunset Construction's in there, George, and he'll start. Phase two, which is the laterals, if everybody understands, the laterals into the center of the field, will be accomplished when we know we have enough money between Soccer and our budget to get the necessary topsoil and materials to raise these fields up 12 inches. Now we put those lateral pipes in, and they'll go back to the perimeters, and then they'll all drain out. Do the, when we do that, or when it's done, how long will those fields have to be out of service? Well, we don't, what we're gonna do is we're gonna close them down for fall. The perimeter drains that we're doing now are not closing the fields. Right. Soccer's put some money away, in their budget, that they know in the coming 18-month period, they're gonna have to go out and rent space, okay? And it's probably gonna be over here at the new facility.
At that point?
Yeah, yeah. So they have that in there, but they're working that into their budget, so that when we do the fields and laterals, we can be down. We'd like to get it all through spring, but really, the critical time would be when Soccer has their fall season, which is their main season. We're gonna have to be shut down for one of those seasons in the coming year. It's not gonna be 2012, right now, it looks like it'll be 2013. But people understand, though, that when this 12 inches is put on, what the laterals in, they'll have to be out of service for some period of time to grow the grass. You guys have been around a while, you understand.
Yeah, we have.
We don't understand, but if we have an alternate for them to go, we have, for them to play, they're fine with it. And we, I think Soccer's done a good job of putting that together, of the plan. Okay. We have the walkway that runs from the playground by the pavilion when they cross over the bridge. Once you get out of the playground area, that path is pretty much taking a shot. And so there's a blacktop issue over there, and some, we'd like to probably rip it and re-blackpop it, would be the proper way to do it. And that's one of those blacktop projects, which we'll have to talk with the town about. It's undefined right now how we're gonna accomplish that. Is that, that's not a great big project, though, is it?
Long.
It's long, but it's about 30, 32 inches wide, 36 inches wide, this pathway, and it runs, I think, about 600... Oh, it's that long?
Yeah.
It's long.
Yeah. It's the width of two football fields.
Yeah.
Maybe one, maybe 450 to 600, not just going...
Yeah. The soccer field. Okay. So that's one. Then the next one, obviously, at the bottom, is the paved driveway in the parking lot. We got, the town had done one half that parking lot years ago, and depending on how pricing goes and things go, Broderick's got that on his radar, and if we can, you know, if he can do a strip, he'll do a strip. You know, and we'll try to do that as we go along.
Most of what we've been doing is, you know, patching, and there's some areas that it's more than a patch, because it's real wide area. Last year, me and Broderick measured it off to see if we could do it as a capital improvement project. And that was just the front parking lot, not the...
Right.
Not the back. And, yeah, the front, believe it or not, quite large, but we fixed it before we had the bicycle race.
Yes.
But is that the same area you're talking about?
No, we're talking about the one closer to the pavilion.
Okay.
Okay? Yeah, I mean, we've had a discussion, right now, there is no talk of paving any of those back parking lots. The object is to just get more riprap in there, maybe raise them up as we raise things up. They serve for drainage.
Right.
Okay? So, but we're already blacktopped in where we're at, by the pavilion, so we have to really finish that off. And we've looked at our own, within our own budget, George has talked about, maybe we buy the material, and if the town gets a shot or an opportunity... Put it in. They'll put it in. Yeah. Okay? While we're talking about blacktop and recreation, it's full recreation, just in the back of your mind, think about a basketball court. At Craigville? At Craigville. I've been approached by, and I know that's a real need, they have the one on Erie Street, but it's a problem. A lot of the older kids are always there. So, not for now, I'm just telling you, please think about that somewhere.
But we have, just so you know, there's the basketball court right there in the corner of Hamiltonian.
I know, that's on Hamilton, that's in...
No, but I just, I never knew who owned that, who owns that. Well, we own it, yeah.
But that's, 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 at Craigville, that's Ganley. And we've done some, we rehabbed Ganley pretty well, and we had a nice Boy Scout project out there. Basketball courts functional, the pavilion out there is functional, it was a real nice job. The kid did, there was another Eagle Scout project that pushed probably three Eagle Scout projects through, and about the way, it seems like I have one every year.
I have a question for you. This is completely, since you brought up basketball, I'm gonna bring up something else. There are some gentlemen in our club, our Italian American Association, that always talked about building a bocce ball court out there. If the club is willing to pay for everything and do it, who do we have to get permission to do that? I just figured, bring it out now.
I don't know, I'm prepared.
Join right?
Well, no, I'm just bringing it up. What do you want for a bocce?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think I, I don't think you'd have...
You know our Ferrante and all that.
Yeah, I don't think you'd have any problem with us. Gone, and we had old horseshoe pits that they put out, a group put out for years, and we had to finally demolish some. They got a little outdated, and, you know, they weren't being used, so they were a little bit of liability. But the bocce courts really, some two-by-sixes, you stand them up and build yourself, you're like...
Well, if you really want a nice one, which two-by-sixes can't hold them, they'll force some of these guys when they get mad. No, anyway, I just asked you a question.
Yeah, we could work with you, we could work with you on that, okay? Okay, now we can, we're off. Now, that's the town... I'd like to say this, though, you talked about Broderick, and Broderick is of the mind that he'd like to be involved in all this. He's the new, the way you're looking at business, so it used to be that you would come to this board, we would do this, do that, and... But he'd like to be the daily person you talk to, plan with, such that, because he'll be doing a lot of this versus coming here most of the time. Now, we'll fund it, of course, but he'll be the one, if he can do it, we'll put it on his schedule to go do. Understood. I think that George wanted me to bring, just so you guys know. Oh, no, absolutely. No, no, he has, absolutely. And we're, like I said, Broderick's a breath of fresh air. Yeah.
Well, me and Broderick, we had long conversations on this for a couple of months, off and on, and he's got a buy-in for this. It is our recreation, it's a whole different attitude and so forth. It used to be hard before, I'll be quite honest, because it was always last minute, we hear about doing some blacktops and so forth. And, you know, it was the end of the fall, you know, the beginning of the fall, and so it didn't work out. But now, with Broderick having a buy-in on it, we know it's happening, we know what you have to prepare for, so it's a lot easier. And you're right, he's a wonderful guy to work with.
Yeah, but he also, if you go out to his office, he's got three boards. He lists the priorities, the ways he's gonna be working on a win, and I watch those boards, and when he achieves one, of course, he raises it off, puts another one, it's played. So I think that if he says, like, it's gonna be there in July, the drainage, he'll be there in July. Sure of it. And the other thing, you know what, I'm not gonna push him, to tell you the truth, we're not here to push him, we can see that he's got, you know, there's a method to the madness here. He knows exactly what he's trying to lay out.
And we're understaffed, you know that, based on all the cuts and so forth, so we're trying to maximize everything we can do, so...
We work the backlog.
Yeah.
We're not understaffed, we work the backlog.
Listen, I just said it in a way...
I'm not a politician.
Move on.
Let's go, move on. Silesian Park, yeah. All right, there's an RFP you gentlemen have drafted for the demolition of the school building. We're gonna discuss that with a joint village, now, you need to understand, we, we don't, our funday, which we're broke. And I don't know, but we might exercise that RFP just to find out what it will cost us to do. But that's for the two boards to, to... And we're gonna be discussing... Discussing that. Because, you know, we're certain, we were anxious to get that building down, but it's, but we, at least we got the RFP now, we have people to bid on. Right. And, you know, would love to see some, you know, well, price it, I price it every day. My pricing services are free. Yeah. My hit, what's my hit ratio, maybe 10 or 12 percent, you know, in today's economy, and that's how it is. I would love to see some pricing on what the demolition is, and we'll take it from there. Good. It is one of the priorities. It is a priority, we just gotta figure, we're gonna exercise it. Okay, good. All right, we need to, we have one, we have one need right now of a field, a solution. We'd like to put some sort of field there. And so the other discussion would be that active, passive part issue, that we would ask that the town and village address together. I believe we have enough interest from football and soccer to put something together, to find ourselves an area. As I said to George, I need a, we'd love to clear an area about 400 feet long by 250 foot wide. Just get yourself another well-drained, sloped field. You could do football or soccer on it, and I would love to see soil sample out there, because I can see the one area next to, which would be on the southeast corner of the park, which would be next to the cemetery, the Silesian Cemetery. It's an old farm field, it'd be interesting to see if you were able to check the soil samples there, you might even have enough topsoil.
Is that, there was a farmhouse back there.
Yeah. There was a field in that front.
Yeah.
There was a field in that...
I played on it, it was a nice field.
Yes, there was a nice field.
Yeah.
Okay.
So in fact, you know, to be aware, though, you know, they, they had one planted tree right in the middle of it now.
Right.
They're not big, but they're there.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a great, that was a good, in fact, you talk about drainage, that place was amazing. When I was a boy, if we had a flood or a rain out elsewhere, you could go to Silesian and play, because the drainage was so good. Well, the people I used to rent, we used to last the pavilion there, and then they used to go back to the field and play baseball. That's how I knew about it. Yeah, the camp was there, yeah, they had a camp.
My son went to camp there, they had the pavilion, the field, the pond, they had boats in the pond. It was a great, great facility, it really was.
It was, yeah.
And we'll get to that, that's the next thing I, we have to write those... Well, but I think what we can do is, both of those items, the demolition of the school building and the pass versus active parks, those are two items that we can talk at our, and it probably will be in July when we have this joint meeting with the new building. I would ask you to put that on the menu, you know, the agenda, and have that discussion. Right. But in fact, people come to us, even the school has come to us about, that matters, I think, even the school has come to us about running track, cross-country, and putting a trail, having the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts put a trail for that park, and using that as part of the cross-country track movement. And I thought that was an interesting proposal, you know, that they came... And I thought that was an interesting proposal, you know, that they came over to the United Area to run cross-country. I'm like, really? You know?
Yes.
But the more I thought about it, the more.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But would they start the race there, or would they have to cross the highway, the road?
I, I gotta believe that they would, they would, they would end up on some roadwork. And I, I gotta believe they could, they could end up on Craigville.
Yeah.
They could start Solition, end up on Craigville, and end up coming home through the main gate, you know? I was, you know, it was an interesting concept, so.
Okay.
So, you know, making it into a more active park, giving us a little more. The other thing was an aerator for the pond.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We've, you know, that system's a little more expensive than what we thought. We did go to a non-licensed base, um, uh, solution, a, a, a compound used for cleaning the pond, trying to get some of the algae out.
Right.
Uh, we didn't get into the heavier stuff, where we need the DEC permit or any of that. We just went to a pond company and they had a bucket of, a bucket worth of something that we could try, green technology. We're attempting that now.
Wow.
Okay?
Yeah, it looked pretty bad. I went out the other day.
I was there yesterday.
Yeah.
Pretty scummy.
Yeah, it's pretty scummy, it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, but we need, but we also need an aerator.
By the way, can we use copper sulfate these days? Is that outlawed?
That was good.
It's, yeah, it's, no, it's, copper sulfate is on, was on, in this booklet, yes, copper sulfate is still out there.
Okay, because that works well.
I thought you couldn't.
I, I'm asking our director.
It works well.
I'm asking our director, Trish, you know, Trish Ray, Trish Sherlock.
Right.
She is, uh, you know, the question is, do we wanna go to get the licensing from the DEC? And, and she's gonna look into what that requires.
Okay.
I've gotten it up in Yankee Lake and so.
We have a pond on the hill above me that was always, we always used copper sulfate.
Well, it was. Environmental protection of what you use. They might have you use some of these other compounds, and we, we've seen it.
It's great, oh, it's wonderful what's out there.
Absolutely.
Do you know what an aerator costs?
We priced out one, we were looking at, at, in the neighborhood of a twelve thousand dollar number to get some, uh, to get it done what we thought. That pond is pretty much, whoever built the pond said, let's take an acre, a square acre, and make ourselves a pond. That's what, that pond is.
A square acre.
Yeah. Two hundred feet, two hundred forty feet by two hundred and forty.
How much power do those things take too? Are they pretty, pretty fair-sized motors?
Yeah, yes. Well, you can get them with, you know, a combination unit, so you go in cycles. You run one, then you go to the other, and you come back and they'll run in two-hour cycles. It won't be that bad. I, I, you know, I wouldn't run off fifteen amp.
Breaker.
Breaker is another question, but I don't believe I have to get to two twenty volts.
Right.
Still more than a one-twenty volt range.
Okay.
So that's something on our radar. We haven't, we haven't fully defined that yet, and we need to be abreast of that. We're renovating the walkways and the paths.
Is this around the pond, or which, where are you talking about?
Well, that's all over the park. You know, there is, uh, when we originally did the parks, uh, they put down a, uh, granular-based, uh, you know, wind used for grading, really, you know, so you got the, the, the check about the blacktop, you know? And, uh, so we have weeds come through and things, and, and there might be some areas that we, we need to maybe blacktop them again, because they were blacktopped before, but we also are doing a heavy weeding.
Can you use a Roundup or something to spray all of it?
We cannot.
Because of the park?
Yes, unless we have that license, you know, we have to, we don't, we can't use that at Craigville, we can't use that at Solition.
Right.
I mean, Judge Seale's been very helpful to us. He's always got a couple of kids that need a little weeding, you know, weeding.
Need a service?
So we're gonna put two out there next, next, uh, next week, and they'll, you know, get them parapet pads, and they go around. The only way to do is really, you know, screwdriver.
Yep, dig it up.
Spackle bucket.
Good, okay.
Um, but there, but some of those paths do need some work, you know? Uh, paving over Solition. A, a big issue right now is the driveway coming in.
What we did didn't suffice?
No.
Okay.
We, we, we got some, uh, we've been working with the library, as you know, just when we were on board, the library. Now there's a much better relationship. We're able to cut the grass, you know, for aesthetic and value, remember I was pushing, I said, I gotta get it so it all looks even, you know?
Right, sure.
Yeah, so we got that, and they're working with us, and then we, you know, it's a right-of-way, really, that we're driving over.
Yes, that's right.
But they have said, because they have no problem if we need to rehabilitate the road and want a blacktop, that they'll, they're fine with that, so that's on our radar screen.
Okay.
But that patchwork is much better than it was.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, no doubt, no doubt. We have, uh.
But you were talking to Pam, I mean, I'm sure you're talking to the roadway right back to where the, where the stones started, were they? And that's where we'd end, or you talk about the runway entire loop?
I, I, no, just get to the loop. Again.
Get to do it.
Get to the loop, I, you know, because it was blacktop already. Where it's blacktop already, you gotta go there. But I am definitely in favor, where it's not, we have gravity. You're looking at, you're having some regular games with some twenty-year-old plus men.
Yeah, exactly.
In the middle of the day, playing a heavy game of basketball, and what Phil's getting a lose to is.
There you go.
You're losing your teenagers and younger, like, whoop, this is, I got some six-foot, five, six-foot.
Yeah. You know?
Can't play.
Yeah.
Just cannot play.
And so, uh, you know, we're trying to keep that, you know, the surface on that's good. Might have to, again, be resurfaced again, it was done four years ago, but, and it's getting a lot of usage, but we probably do need to look at some other place to play basketball for some of these, these kids. And we'll look at that, now that you brought that up, I'll put that on the radar screen.
Excellent.
Doing something over there, Craigville.
Good.
Uh, Lyons Park. Lyons has got a lot of, uh, we've been doing a lot of brush removal, tree clearing, that kind of thing. Just try to get the parks boosted up. Uh, if you remember, we were with us when we rehabbed the, uh, the, uh, the fireplace. It's a nice park. It's being used, you are able to go in there and use it. You know, we had to make it a little more accessible with the roadway, we cleaned it up going in, so that
Yes.
the police can drive in, you know, I mean, because it is one of those parks that's buried back in. And we do have the issue of, uh, of being, you know, drinking and after-hours, not gonna get a start. Uh, and the lights getting busted, but we're sort of getting away from that. It's been improving over the last couple of years. We wanna stay with, uh, you know, still doing some more brush removal, cleaning the park up a little, opening it up so you can see in it easy enough. And getting some, we're gonna get some of those picnic tables and refurbish the ones that are busted up and get some new ones in there. So that's, that's where we're at the area.
Hey, Kevin, I have one question. Are you gonna, you have any intentions of doing the same thing immediately with the village board and going over this whole list, just so they have a flavor of it?
Yes, we would do that. The reason I'm here, we started with you.
No, that's fine.
George, George is, I have an active member on my, on the commission with me, from the town. And we've been, and we've been a little sleep a little bit with, with the, with the village, a member, because there was a lot going on there, we'd do a lot. Now we're helping Brady, Brizdell, Light and Table.
No, it's, it's just so that everybody has a flavor of what's going on, because all of this is, is the town and the village, so we should all feel the same, and so, just trying to make it so we all know where we have to go.
One of the confusing factors when I was in joint recruitment, Susan Mazels with Care, is, uh, and I never did figure it out. And that is when Craigville Park was built, people said, well, that, and that and Gangly Park were, they're the town. And all the other ones in the village, Bruin Park and all the others were the village. And then other people said, no, no, that's not the case.
No, it's not.
And, and so I think that all of these, I mean, although Broderick will probably be the mainstay for Craigville, but, and maybe Mike Nuzzelis will be the one for Erie and Lyons or whatever. But in, but in general, the dollars to support them should come proportionally.
And then, and that, anytime you have capital, parkland fees, we do it jointly. So that's why, if any of these become capital projects, it's a joint thing, so that's why I'm saying they should.
When Craigville Park was built, we started the joint recreation, Kenny's wife was one of the first on it. That's why we started the joint recreation and pooled everything together. That was my administration when we were there.
But it, but we, but we got away from that evidently.
Yes.
Through the years, and, and it was, that's village, that's, that's town. And, uh, and when Susan was there, we began to, no, no, let's look at it as a joint recreation funding gatherer and so forth. So, so, so we, George, you and Roy, he's working on, and that, so that
Yeah.
each board has an understanding of that. Otherwise, we'll be parochial about it.
We have Bruin Park, whatever happens in Bruin.
Okay, so that, Bruin, I didn't put any, because I have the real capital projects out there, we accomplished it.
We repaired the fence, made a nice-looking entranceway off the footpath, you know, on, on footpath. But looks, Bruin looks inviting from the footpath, people coming and using it. There's a real equipment in there. We refurbished the pavilion, that's probably gonna be a couple years down the road, that, that'll come up. And that park gets rented. I think Craigville's a renter, Bruin's a renter. People want, because I got electricity, I got a barbecue pit, people wanna, people wanna come to it. Now, over the course of time, Doug, we have expanded those rental fees dramatically. But I don't know how dramatic in, in terms of the times. It's dramatic in terms of where we were and where we're at now, what we're charging, but in the grand scheme of things, to rent a park with a kitchen and all for a couple of hundred bucks.
Right.
I mean, you, you know, instead of thirty dollars, I mean, it's, it's, it's all relative, it's all relative. We were still pushing up.
While you're here, there's a question. Jerry called me the other day about the sign. You, you got a call about there's gonna be a.
June, June twenty-third.
The scoreboard.
At ten-thirty.
Ten, ten-thirty, okay.
To dedicate the scoreboard.
At, at the boys' majors field?
Yes.
Yes, okay. June twenty-third.
At ten-thirty.
Parks had a rough time, Craigville's had a rough time this spring. Uh, we've, not damaged, but, you know, teams are averaging probably about five missed games, you know, and trying to make up, even to make up some odds. You know, we are at the mercy of God.
By the way, that's true.
That's how it is, you know?
By the way, who's coordinating that dedication, that sign?
The Little Weeds.
Yes.
Garten, that's his last name, G-A-R-T-E-N.
Yes.
Well, he, he's the.
Liaison.
Liaison person.
Yeah, Tommy Quinn and, uh.
Liaison to who?
And, uh, and Company.
Recreation Department?
He's the one who emailed.
He emailed you, but nobody in the town board.
I mean, who's he, who is he, the Honda Place, or the Joint Recreation, or?
No, Little Weeds.
Is the liaison.
And joint rec, or?
Yeah, Goshen Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
They're donating that, they're, they donated that to the, uh, the scoreboard from, uh.
Bill Tonto.
Bill Tonto. Look, New Berkeley.
Okay, well, you know, Kevin, thank you very much for this, and I appreciate your time, but by the way, I'm grateful you're in the job you're in out there.
Yes.
You, you're the man.
Talk.
And, and you've got the experience.
You do.
That's the part that, that, and, and, you know, I know you're an unsung hero, as far as a lot of us are concerned.
Yes.
You bet, so.
Thank you for all your.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, and we will, uh, do our best to.
Just keep on radar screen.
We will certainly do that. We'll do it, okay.
If parkland fees come available, you know, we'll look at this.
Okay, the next one, folks, let's go under old business, item four, approve the minutes. Would someone like to make a motion, we approve the minutes of town board work session on May twenty-first, and the regular meeting of May ten and May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I already gave one, I was a typo there, and gave the other one.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one is under new business. By the way, that, we, we just had great, we asked for that list, project list.
Thanks.
Now we got it, we can, so we can work off that, and, and thank goodness of Broderick, he truly is doing a great job. Okay, the next item, review and discuss employee dental and vision plan insurance premium increases and authorize supervisor to sign a contract renewal for the same. These were stapled together, they really shouldn't be. The second one is the page is the Horizon Dental Plan and the Platoon Twelve Vision Plan. You can see the current charges for their, the dental plan are eighty dollars and sixty-two cents per employee. And then, and that's per month. And then for the, it's going up, uh, three dollars and twenty-two cents. The vision plan is costing us today twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, and it's going up to twenty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. And these are effective January first through, um, I'm sorry, July first, two thousand and eleven, through Ju- June thirtieth of two thousand and twelve. Now, this, these are all, this is, if you go back, the, when we create, we're working with CSEA. This, this is provided by the CSEA Employment Benefit Fund, our group, who, who, and evidently back in June twentieth nineteen ninety, the town agreed to get into these and would work through the CSEA Employment Benefit Fund to provide these. So, with that, would someone like to make a motion to authorize a supervisor to sign for these increased, uh, insurance premiums?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next one is the, uh, you can see the email from Joshua Dogg, who is the Associate General Counsel for the Right Risk Management of America. And basically, the, as of December thirty-first, two thousand and eleven, we have seven tail claims. And they charge us each year five hundred dollars to manage each one of those. And that number has been reducing each year since we've been using them. Uh, they're saying the fees are gonna remain the same for this year as it was last year. And then he said, and I've got the agreement to sign, so would someone like to make a motion, authorizing supervisor to sign that agreement with Right, Right Risk Management?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next to last item is, uh, we talked about on Monday, the, the speed limit changes on Plaskey Highway, which is County Route Six. And Dennis took what we had, and you can see in the resolution. Therefore, be resolved, the town board, the Town of Goshen does here, I recommend to the County of Orange and the State of New York, that the speed limit on roadway in the Town of Goshen between Indiana Road and Pumpkin Swamp Road be lowered from fifty-five miles an hour to forty-five miles an hour, and that, by the way, due to farming. And that the speed limit on the roadway in the Town of Goshen between Pumpkin Swamp Road and Cross Road be increased from thirty-five to forty-five miles per hour. And that's so that the entire road will be forty-five miles an hour in deference to the drivers. And that a traffic signal be installed in the Town of Goshen at the intersection of County Road Six, Plaskey Highway, and Route Seventeen A. Now, we can request that of the state. I think that probably will not be approved, but with any of these, we're just making our recommendation on a request.
Yeah.
Would someone like to make a motion in regard to this resolution?
That we support the resolution?
That we support this?
Yeah.
So moved. Second? Any discussion?
Yeah, one typo.
Yeah, I see.
Notice that, yeah?
Yep.
From?
From.
This other woman's gonna be fired.
Oh, get him.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I need a roll call book to find this evidently. Uh, Madam Flurk, can we have a roll call book, please, in this?
Councilman Cantorina?
Aye.
Councilman Lyons?
Aye.
Councilman Capella?
Aye.
Supervisor Bloomfield?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries, thank you very much.
Should somebody follow up and send a copy of the resolution, or a write, some kind of write-up to Annie Rabbit, so she knows that we're carrying this?
This, this happens automatically, Priscilla manages this.
I just want to, and I apologize, who was the second on that?
I was the second.
Jury.
Okay.
Yes, so. Okay, would someone like to make a motion that we authorize, in regard to finance, to authorize a supervisor to pay manual accounts payable check runs as of five thirty-one, two thousand and twelve, amounting to eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and five cents? That should be a point there, and a total funding for accounts payable check run of June fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, amounting to two hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-six cents.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion other than that point oh five? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're now open for approval to the floor, anybody got anything? I do. One item.
That was your privilege.
It's my privilege. I've been out to the Goshen Humane Society and looked at their new addition, dog runs and things that they built with the, uh, funding that came from Dr. Schurtot's widow, that was left to the humane side, it is very, very, very nice. The other thing is, I went in twice, and each time volunteers were in there working, cleaning, and taking care of the place. And it looked to be run very well, and they really have the animals' well-being at hand, so, my accolades to them. Because I know in the past, we've had all the A Team and the B Team, and they're arguing back and forth, that seems to have subsided, and I think that the current leadership and the current manager, things are going very, very well. I also asked about, that we've contracted with them for the couple of months for the dog control, and that's going very well, so, uh, good for us, good for them, that's it, and, so I'll leave it at that. Anybody else got anything for approval to the floor?
Aye.
Yes.
When I write my memoirs, Councilman Lyons, I'm just gonna be hired to proofread it.
Yeah, it's probably good that, you know, you can't take the sweetest...
We had a compliment.
Certainly was.
And, and, and secondly, are you planning on hanging meat in here?
I don't think it's meat.
And, and thirdly, thirdly, since you were talking about the Craigville Park joint rec tonight, on Monday, there were, there were recollections of Myron, um, and I just want to point out that that was prior to when we were recording things, and it certainly would have been nice if there had been recordings, if we had at this point recordings of that time, which we don't, uh, but, but there will certainly be recordings of this period during which we've been doing it.
They would have been entertaining, I can tell you that. Each one was a movie, each one would have been a movie to tell.
Oh, it was wonderful.
It really was.
Oh, Jackass movies, you know what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I was, they were live, I can tell you that much. Okay, anything else from the, from the...
Of all.
Okay, would some, well, would someone like to make a motion that we adjourn and go into executive session with the intent not to return, to talk about tax, tax, statutory status update, and is there anything else we'd like to talk about in executive session?
No, that's enough.
All in favor, I mean, sorry, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Folks, thank you very much for coming.
We didn't have it until twenty to twelve last Monday. You got it, plus with the leader of the block, it was like, oh my god. Heritage, it's all heritage.
I'm glad that heritage's up.
Well, I, I won't, I had a heritage once, and thirty, so, yeah, no.